6:03, so we'll get started. One moment, I'll just turn my phone off. Round one. Can I find the right key? We'll get started. Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Placko, can you take the role?
Lori Pruduski.
Here.
Linda Grassi.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Jennifer Arden. Here. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under common indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Alright, so that brings us to our working session for the Board of Education's self-evaluation. So I believe everybody had the formate sent out previously. Alright, so just to kind of, a couple reminders. So again, we're doing this and we can focus on the performance of the board, to think about what can we get better at, what did we do well that we should continue. So that's kind of how the focus of the conversation will go. So the first one we had that we approved was provide responsible school board governance. And the first one on there is conduct board and district business in a fair, respectful, and responsible manner as outlined by the OSBA Good Board Member Behavior. And it's also in our education, our Riverside Board of Education handbook. I don't know, we want to just go down in a row, kind of talk about what ratings we had?
Sure.
I have to find them.
Anyone want to start?
I, I'm here, I'll start. Do you want to go through all of them at once, or do you want to just do one at a time?
I was gonna go through all, I'll take suggestions, this is our first time working through this, right? So I was gonna go through A, B, C, D.
A, B, C, D?
Yep.
Okay, so I, for, the first one, I, A, I could, I thought we need some improvement on how we conduct our business fairly and respectfully towards each other at least, as outlined in our member handbook.
I'd agree with that, that's what I was going to say.
I also, Mark needs improvement on that one. Again, just kind of following what's in our handbook was one of the areas that I said we need to kind of follow those guidelines and rules that we agreed to. I don't know, Mr. Hack, have you had anything different?
I, I do not, and I just, to put my cards on the table, I, working on the board, I have not spent much time on the evaluation.
Okay, alright. Mr. Fischel?
I would just agree that in general, board needs, could use some improvement on how it operates.
Is there any goals that we would set for ourselves in this space for next year?
No, I just felt like would be hopeful that we can follow our, our own internal handbook, Riverside Board of Education handbook.
Any other thoughts from the table?
Take it to her.
My, my thought would be to be more professional.
Can you elaborate on that maybe?
Just improve the way we operate, and have a better attitude as a group.
Yeah, I, I had the same thing about following the Board of Education handbook. I mean, we put that together and agreed upon it as a group, so that's where I kind of focused on, is that there's things in there that we aren't always following and conducting ourselves in that manner. So I would go back to we, as a goal, that we need to make sure that we are continuing to review that and to operate per our agreements. So, no, reset, cut, pass?
I, I did, I just, you know, I, obviously, this is important stuff, but, but obviously, you know, I will not be on the board come, come January, so this is something that the enduring board members would, you know, have to.
Ms. Harvin?
I don't think.
The second one here was ensure the board is accountable and open to public, including seeking divergent perspectives in its decision-making process. I'll kick up, I think we need improvement here also, just to make sure that we're considering all perspectives in the district. Anybody else?
So I could feel like we need improvement, but I think we're open to, I think we sit at the board table and we allow people to add public comment, we listen to the people, listen to people who come forth or send emails or whatever it is. I feel we give people opportunity, it's, I think sometimes our response is, I think, we need some improvement, so.
Mr. Fischel or Ms. Harvin?
I think we meet, we meet the goals on that. I think that we're open, and we certainly have diverse perspectives, so I think there's room for improvement no matter what category we're talking in, but I think we need that.
Okay.
I think we do an excellent job of allowing the public to speak and hearing what they have to say. So I think we're very open to the public and receiving all their statements, thoughts, and ideas. Not all school boards do that.
So would you put a "meet" in that category, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry?
Are you saying that's a "meet" in that category?
Well, I think we meet that very much.
Alright, any other goals there that we should set for ourselves for next year for that, or this school year?
You good?
Alright. C is just understand the district's budget and speak to the financial position, needs an outlook of the district.
I felt we need that.
Yep.
I, I had "meets" too, Mr. Fischel?
I would say that, and the short answer is we meet that, and I would add to that, that it helps meeting it easily when the, we're in a positive balance. So I think, I think we're in a good position there, and I think it makes it a lot easier for the board to meet that.
Any goals that we want to set for ourselves as we look, again, to this year in that category?
I would just add one note, that as we look forward with the new two-year forward-looking, that we're gonna need to be prepared to look at our finances as to when we will need to ask for more revenue. And that's just more of an awareness, because we may not have to do that for a whole nother year or two.
So I know as a district in our strategic plan, we have, you know, definite goals set for fiscal responsibility, so I don't know if there's anything we think as a board that we should set a goal for ourselves to help support that. Is there any thought on that?
No, I'm really, no.
Okay. Alright, so the last one in this standard is understand and adopt district policies to affect the orderly administration of the district's schools and to support continuous improvement of student achievement.
I think we meet the goals on that.
I think, I think we absolutely meet the goals on that. I question whether or not some people understand that we meet those goals.
So I had "meets" on that also, Mr. Fischel?
I think we have one area of distinct deficiency, and that is on student scoring performance, especially in math. I think that should be a very intense focus in raising that performance level.
So, again, this is in regards to policy, so do you think that we are deficient in policies to support that?
Well, do we have a policy that requires the administration to meet certain goals? So a policy in general, I don't know if we need to create a new policy, we need to create a standard. I just think we need work in that area.
I think that's part of what you're talking about is listed later when we talk about setting expectations for superintendent and treasurer, that's in standard four, so that, I don't think that has place in policy. I think that's expectations of the board for job performance, and so I don't believe that belongs in policy.
Yeah, and I'm, I guess when I look at it, I think setting that objective belongs in the objective, so I guess...
No, and that's okay, that's more defined, we can move it.
I'm gonna move it, the standard?
It's standard four. On the last page, it's on the last page.
When it comes to adopting policy or reviewing policy, is there any goals that we want to set for ourselves this year?
I just want to make clear, we have a policy committee that reviews the policies that are set forth by NEOL and whatnot. Our policy committee reviews those, that's the whole purpose behind having that. It's, it's complicated when we have individuals who sit on our board and go out and publicly state that they want to create their own policies to fit the view, their view, and that they want to have the district follow those policies. I don't know that, we need to be very concerned with that, we need to make sure that whatever policies we have support continuous improvement of student achievement, and if some of these other things don't have anything to do with student achievement, they really don't have any place in that policy. So I don't know, I just question some of those kinds of statements when I hear them.
I believe, and I think it'd be good to look at, and the Board of Education handbook, I believe, describes the description of what the committees do. I'll have to go back and look.
I don't think I have that, I have it on my computer, but I can't do two things at once, so.
Any other goals that we should think about setting around policy for the next year? Or for this school year, I should say, I keep saying next year, but. Mr. Fischel, on D, I guess I didn't capture what, do you think we're "meets", needs improvement for that one, or?
Well, I'm happy to wait for the fourth stage of standards.
Okay, but for that one, in general, are you "meets" or for the policy one, if we describe it as? I mean, again, it's your opinion, so I'm not...
Yeah, I would, I would just, because I think they overlap a little bit, I think that would need some improvement.
Okay. Any other comments on standard one? So just to ask again, this is our first time going through this, so do you guys think this fairly represents, when it comes to providing responsible school board governance, represents what we are doing? Or is there something you would suggest a change here, as far as the evaluation?
No, I think, item A, item A really discusses and encompasses our Riverside Board of Education handbook, which goes into great detail on what we expect our responsibilities to be, and what, how we expect to, you know, relate to one another, and how we, how we expect to fulfill our duties as in that role. And so I think it does encompass, for me, at least what it's supposed to.
Right, Mr. Fischel?
Anything there?
I have no comment.
Ms. Harvin?
I'm good.
Alright, that brings us to standard two then, we said, what's set and communicate a district strategy that supports continuous improvement. Excuse me, the first one is ensure a safe, healthy, and happy place to work and learn through the development of healthy organizational habits. Any thoughts on our reading there?
So I said maybe not.
Maybe not? Needs improvement?
Yeah, right. And, and I circled "safe" and "healthy", and I think we try to do our best to do that. Whether or not we create a happy place to work, I believe we create some dissension at some times with our staff when, when there are things that are set at the board table that cause disruption to their sense of happiness with working for this district. I would like to, I would like to think that the people who sit at this table appreciate and value what our staff does every single day, and not make statements that disregard that. I'm looking for the right word, I'm looking for the word that I want, but that's all that comes to mind, so.
Ms. Harvin, or Mr. Fischel?
I think we meet that standard.
I'd like to think that we meet that standard.
So are you in the camp that we do need some improvement there?
Oh, like I said, I don't think there's gonna be a single thing on here that I wouldn't say that we need improvement on. I think there's always room for improvement everywhere.
Right. I had "meets", I'll be honest, this was the hardest standard for me to evaluate, because I don't know as a board, like, we have a strategic plan out there, and I don't know if we're doing everything as a board we can to kind of help support that when it comes to communicating or talking about it. So I had a question mark kind of down through here, I did put "meets", but I definitely think there's some opportunity for us as a board in general in this area. So this one was like the most difficult for me to answer. So again, I had a "meets" on this one also. Any goals we would set for ourselves around that, I think? Ms. Grassi, you mentioned just how we address things at the table sometimes, and I think that goes back to the professionalism that we talked about in the last standard also.
Yeah, I just feel like some, some of us should be a little bit mindful of, these are the people that work to create and do and implement the strategies that the Board of Education Administration, the administration worked hard to put into place. Yeah, and not recognizing their, their contributions to the district, and what they are doing for our students sometimes is, causes me some dismay.
Any other goals that we should set for ourselves for this year? B is engage community through communication, educational advocacy, development of purposeful partnerships with business and alumni. Did everybody have this one as?
I thought we made that.
Right, that "meets".
Yeah, "meets".
Mr. Fischel?
I would agree with "meets".
I think our Business Advisory Council, Mr. Placko putting out into the township meetings, so, again, I think we're doing pretty good here, so. Any goals that we would set for ourselves going into, for this year? Next is, C is maximize return on investment for all funding sources and seek new revenue streams for facilities plan, implementation, and financially support district priorities and strategies.
What "meets", need, were "see" in that area?
Yeah, I'd say "need".
Mr. Fischel?
Well, yeah, I would, I would say that that's, I don't know if that's a complete... I would say we meet that, just because I don't think we have any, any problem areas there. Along with that, I think that falls more to the treasurer, and, and I think in the collaboration and working together with the treasurer, I think it's been very cohesive and well done, so I think we meet that.
I, and I agree, that's kind of where that, you know, like, Mr. Placko's doing a really good job there, looking for different alternatives, I even know, I think Dr. Malacca looks for different alternatives to fund new programs, things like that. So I know everybody's kind of holding their hand here, helping the district out. So I guess my question's still in this standard is, what can we do to kind of help support that more? Any goals that you guys would say we should set up around this one? Alright, and D is extend program options and delivery to meet the needs of each student and grow teacher capacity in efficiency, efficacy, sorry. Efficiency's important too, but.
I think we do that exceedingly well, actually. I mean, and it's, I don't think it's we, the board.
No, I don't think it's we, the board.
Just so you're clear, I am not taking credit.
No, me either.
Mr. Fischel?
I think that, I think there could be a couple weights of discussion on this category, depending on how we, how we outlined it. And so, the one thing in there that, that really catches my attention is grow teacher capacity. How that is identified, I think, is key. So what would you say, teacher capacity in what way?
Do you, again, in this category though, I get, I understand your question, I think that comes back to the standard in itself overall, so would you say we are meeting here, or do you think we have the improvement? I'm not sure kind of where you're...
Yeah, and, and I think it's, it's a matter of how, how it's viewed, so I think it can be answered in different ways. And, and so, because of that, and without delving into that for an extended period of time, I would, I would say because of our special needs work that we do, and the support and environment that is given to the teachers and the district in general, I think generally we meet it, although if you break it down, I think we could find areas of improvement, but in general, I would say we meet it.
Ms. Harvin?
Yep.
So this standard, it sounds like all of us maybe just, again, I think, our standard says that set and communicate a district strategy, so we have set a district strategy as a board. We've communicated, but is there anything else that we can do? I think our goal, like, what's our goal in this category is support the district, because I think we've all said it, you know, it's the work of the administration and the staff really that makes a lot of this happen. So as a board, what is our goal?
I have, I have two things. As far as growing teacher capacity and efficacy, I would like to know from our old staff how we meet their professional development goals, and how they feel we meet their professional development goals, because I know we do a lot of it, but how do they feel about what it is that we offer? How do you feel about how we allow them to grow in their profession as a teacher? What we allow them to do, like, we've given some teachers some abilities to do some pretty fun things this past year, at least at high school level that I'm aware of, like, how much do we do that overall? If a teacher chooses to do something, right? Like, if they come and say, hey, I, I would like to know that we offer our staff the environment that allows them to come to their principal or administrator or whatever and say, I would love to do this, can I do that? Right, like, some organizations you go to, people would just like to do things because they don't, they don't feel comfortable.
Which is great, and I think that's the message that's being communicated, is that chance? Right. Right?
So, so I want, I would like to hear from them, do they think that what we're doing is working? Because if it does, then I would like to see us continue that, and if it doesn't, I would like to know that we're something that's based on it, is that they're...
Yep. So that's specifically to D, correct?
Yes, specifically to D, and, and also specifically to D is, how are we meeting the needs of each student on the two ends of the spectrum, not the ones in the middle? Not the ones who are achieving, or the ones who are succeeding, or, you know, you're, you're... I, I'm trying to figure out, like, really, how do we really get to those kids? What can we do better? And what are teachers and staff seeing? And what are their suggestions for how we can do better, I would like to know? Because, again, I'm an educator, so I have no clue how to make those things better. My job is just to listen, to hear what everybody has to say, and then know that these folks up here will kind of take all that and then do something with that.
Any thoughts on standard two?
I would venture into the risk of touching on what Mr. Heck has thought and said in the past, which is, the board has a certain job and a certain amount of bandwidth, and so I think a lot of that falls to the administration to gather that information and package it, so the board can see it and have an understanding of it.
Ms. Harvin?
I guess I, I would add this, so there's, in, in this conversation, the, the role of the board is to interface with the administration, and the administration runs the schools. But the, the role of the board is to be a sanity check, and there is a, it can be, frankly, the, the school environment, frankly, can be pretty insular, and, and we need to, to be a sanity check on that as well. I mean, you need to have a diverse background optimally on the board, but, but you definitely need people to question what's going on, because you're coming from different angles. And, and, and that reinforces, and if a tweak is needed, that reinforces, and hopefully ends up making a better course, setting a better course than if, if the board were not there as a sanity check.
So, Mr. Heck, with your kind of measurement of the standard, you're kind of saying, are we asking the right questions? Are we providing that ability to be that sanity check? Are we digging into things like we should?
Right, and, and just, and to add that other perspective, because I, you know, I, I do. I mean, we have, clearly, we have good people involved at the schools, but, but I, there could be an echo chamber there as well.
The other thing I thought about this standard too, is are we removing roadblocks that the district has and meeting the strategic plan? So that's really dependent on communication that, from the administration to say how we can help also, right? So are we listening to those things, are we helping remove those roadblocks? Like, are we helping promote the right things? That's where I was going from this standard, and it was thinking that's more the role of the board versus some of these things, like what Mr. Placko would do, or, and so forth.
And to engage with, with that thought, are we hearing any of those things as a board? And, and so I'm not so sure we've heard much of that as a board, which, again, goes back to the administration to gather that information, package it, and deliver it, so we can analyze it.
And to what Mr. Heck said to ask the questions, too.
And, a little bit off, off base, but not every school board has committees, and I think it is a strength of this school board, that we have committees, because it gives the opportunity to, to ask more in-depth questions and to understand what's going on, but I really, that, that's, it would be very hard to do that if you just had formal, you know, formal full board meetings, so, anyway.
It's a lot of time, right?
It is a lot of time, but, but that is...
Thank you.
A little bit off-base from the topic, but important, I think.
Anything else on standard two?
Yeah, can I just add that I think, I think we need to understand as a board better that not all criticism is bad, that criticism kind of leads to good things if it's constructive, and so being able to hear constructive criticism in a safe forum, I think for me, overall, like, the district, like, my partner, whatever, when you can, when you can offer and hear constructive criticism in a, in an environment where you understand that it's not a bad thing to hear that stuff, it's actually a good thing to hear it, because then you can make improvements based on it. And that the people who are coming and doing the criticizing need to also understand that, and I don't know that we communicate that, that we're open to hearing that, it's done in the right forum, right? Like, I, I'd like to know that we can provide those forums more frequently than we probably do.
Alright, standard three is fulfill in the roles responsibilities of board of education members. So, president maintains orderly conduct of all board meetings.
I think exceeds, I think you do a fantastic job.
Mr. Fischel? Mr. Fischel? I put a "meets".
If there's, if there's only, if there's anyone only on the audible side of that, Mr. Heck got a thumbs up. So, so I agree.
The president ensures the community has a voice at the meetings within the board policy.
Needs.
I don't know how you exceed, so you definitely, everybody who wants to talk, gets to talk, the end of it.
Mr. Fischel, anything different?
Again, I think we've, we already answered that, but as a board in general, but of course, the president's running the meetings, so I think we meet that.
So president facilitates good communication among the board members and administration.
This is where I think, Lori, you excel, and I'm thrilled with that, because, because that's what we need right now, and I think you've really taken to hand and taken, taken us to a different level, right? Getting the meeting agendas prepared, asking for things in advance, and asking for everybody to follow those rules and be accountable to what we say, like, we're gonna do, and yada, yada, I think, I think you do a really great job at that, and I appreciate it.
Yep, I fully agree. Exceeding that, for sure.
I know, a thumbs up.
Again, for those of you only in the auto, so, yeah, since a lot of that is, is unseen really by anyone else, and all we really see is the result, and since things go smoothly, I would say we meet that.
Thank you. So for those three, for anybody in that, in this, this role in the future, is there any goals that we would set for this year? Or are those the good goals?
I think you should kind of write down what, what, what your process is.
Okay.
For any future board president.
Since I'm a process person, I probably could do that.
Process, job description.
Process map it out. I love pictures.
Because again, a lot of it does not have at the table.
Any other thoughts there? All right. The next one is Committee Chairs ensure all board members are informed, updated of key activities and information presented during the committee meetings. I had a meet here.
Yeah, I had a meet also. I'm really happy with the fact that we have committees.
Any thoughts?
I mean, I guess it depends on the committee you're on. You know, I think every committee runs differently. I do. I don't, I don't have a big thought on it. I'm still with that.
Okay. Mr. Fishel?
I think we meet that.
The goal here, I think, is to make sure that we understand, or it's in our handbook, that, a goal I'd like to see us do is make sure it's in our handbook, what a committee chair does. Kind of, what's that job description? So kind of what Mrs. Grassley said about the President. Like, I think we need to make sure that anybody on a committee understands kind of what the role and responsibility. So probably revisiting our handbook to make sure that's clear in the outline is something I think we should look at. Any other thoughts on that one? All right. Committee members engage with administration to receive updates and to collaborate on district improvements.
I can only speak to the committees I'm on. So I'll always speak to committees that I'm on. It would be helpful if we can't make meetings, that we provide individuals with an upfront, in advance, hey, I can't make this meeting, so that we can reschedule. It doesn't help to have a committee of one, which, at least on one of my committees, at least a third of the time, we have a committee of one.
Mrs. Grassley, so are you saying needs improvement there or?
Again, depends on the committee.
Right.
No, I have one committee that we have perfect attendance.
That's the thing that's on my question, because we each have different committees with different people. So it's not kind of a one.
So in the future, might it be better to separate these out by committee so we can understand from the members of that committee how it's working? Do you think?
I mean, you know, the good thing about it is that we set meetings in advance. We have expectations of what we're gonna cover. We, we get an agenda when we come to the meetings, whatever. And, and since those are set in advance, it would just be nice that if we're not going to be a full committee, if we can reschedule. People are pretty flexible. It can be pretty flexible if no, if no one in advance, so.
Mr. Hack, I don't know. I know you, again, you've been a part of the committees for a while. Any thoughts there?
No, I, I mean, I think that, that. So the, the statement is committee members engage with the administration to receive updates and to collaborate with on district improvements. I mean, my, I, I hope that it is evident during the meetings, if, you know, for the people who are here in person as well as the people who might tune in, that, you know, we are, in most subjects, a reasonably informed board because of the committee process. We're not all universally up to speed on everything that's going on, but collectively, we've got pretty much all facets covered. And I, I think that that is something that is, hopefully, provides some confidence in the, in the voting public who put the board in place, that, that we are doing our job and understand what's going on. So, again, a little peripheral to this, but I do think that's a key benefit to the board.
Mr. Fishel?
Yes, I think we meet that with the item stating committee members engage with the administration. I think we do that very well, to receive updates and to collaborate on district improvements. And I think this board does that very well and very thoroughly.
For next years, are you guys in agreement that we should separate those by committee? Just to see if they're in committee or just keep it all together?
I would keep them all together only because the whole process of committee is, you have expectations of what a committee does.
Okay. The bigger picture.
Right.
Okay. Any, any disagreement or not?
Well, I would agree. If we get into more minutia, we could spend as much time as we want on each item. So I would bunch them together.
Anything here that we should set a goal for, for next year on standard three? I lost my paper. Yes, standard three?
Again, I would just ask that if, if members can't make standing meetings, that they notify people in advance so that we can reschedule.
And I had to mention the goal about making sure our handbook's updated on kind of roles responsibilities of the committee. Anything else? Last one, with just a time check. Oh, we're doing good. So standard four, engage with superintendent and treasurer, set expectations for student learning with clear goals and objectives. So A on that is provide the superintendent with a clear statement of expectation of performance against which he or she will be measured.
What do you mean?
I, I feel we exceed it.
Chris, are they clear?
Well, I mean, you haven't been a part, a part of the evaluation process for the superintendent yet, but like, I think we do a good job of that.
I think we do a good job of giving clear statements. I still think we've always done the best job of follow through.
Correct.
That's why, yeah, that's, that's why for me it'd be more meet than exceed.
Any thoughts?
I think we as a board are deficient in that area. And what it says is provide the superintendent with a clear statement of the expectation. Now, if there has been a verbal statement by one, or verbal statements by more than one member of the board, I'm not aware of that. And also, when we had our meeting, we decided as a board, when I suggested we have written statements of expectation, the board decided not to do that. So I'm not so sure there have been written expectations. Maybe the superintendent can state otherwise. Has there been written expectations given to you by the board?
I have a goal, I have goals for the year.
Yeah.
So you have goals, but are there written expectations outside of the goals?
I thought we were giving them 90 days. We haven't reached that 90 days yet.
Okay, so I'm asking a question. Are there written expectations outside of the goals?
Our goals, expectations.
Goals with the expectation and the strategic plan, and the other one.
Okay, so strategic plans. So I, my input on this item is that the board's a little deficient. I think we need to have clearer written expectations, because when we go to measure, I think the written expectations would be hard and fast, something that anyone could look at, whether it's the five of us or five other people. And, and we could look at it. So I think we, we, I think it needs improvement.
I guess I'm just confused on where we don't have written goals. I mean, that's what the evaluation system provides every single year. And we have a whole list of written goals and expectations in the evaluation system.
So then I realize it's not for Dr. Latino, just because he's new.
Well, no, it's, it's no reason to say it, but I mean, for, we would not have written.
So I think, so Mr. Fishel, we did give job objectives. I think we all saw those were passed out to the entire board after they were written before we actually gave them to Mr. Rotino. But are you saying specifically those were not clear about? Is that what you're thinking?
What I'm saying is that what we know is not comprehensive enough. I think it needs to be more comprehensive. I think it's a big job. And, and I think that, I think that verbal statements aren't always consistent or as understood as written statements. And so I think the written statements and/or more writing of expectations would be helpful for everybody, including our superintendent. And I think when we go to evaluate, if the board has expectations that we are measuring, but the superintendent doesn't have all those clearly, then I think we can have some disconnect. And, and I think the goal is to have success. So I think as much communication as there can be, I think offers a better chance of success.
So I just want to be clear. I don't think there's verbal expectations being set. So no one's set verbal expectations. We handed you, correct?
No.
So that's, I'm confused. That's where I'm confused. It's not verbal expectations. We set the job objectives that we agreed to as a board. So I think what I'm hearing is maybe they just need to be more comprehensive in your perspective.
Well, I'm referring back to the meeting we had, which I know was executive session, but there was nothing in there that would be confidential. So we went into an executive session about with confidential information, and that's not confidential information, discussing the job of the superintendent or our expectation. In that meeting, when I suggested we have written expectations, the majority of the board decided not to do that.
Okay, again, they are written, so we'll pass them out. I think what I'm hearing to you though is you're saying they're not comprehensive enough, because we do have written objectives.
No, I, I understand basic objectives, and I believe it needs to be much more comprehensive.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Again, with the goal of having success, the more everyone's on the same page, the better chance we have of having success.
Okay. Great. B, request information through the superintendent and use information to make decisions that impact the district. How are we doing at that, on a board, as a board?
Always have a good job of that.
All right. Mr. Fishel?
Well, I think in general, we meet that. Obviously, our, our new superintendent hasn't been here long enough to really, you know, affect that. So we would have to look backwards. And, and in doing that, again, that's part of the area where who is interacting with the superintendent the most and gathering that information. I think generally, as a board, we meet that. And, and so there could be a deeper dive into that, but I don't know what the value would be, so I think we generally meet that as a board.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hack, I cut you off. Is there?
Yeah, no, I, I think that there, there has been, under, under the previous administration, there was an open door policy for all of the, as there should be, right? And I, I think that has continued under Dr. Rotino as well. And, and I think that, that's what it needs, needs to be, to have as much positive flow of information, informs the board, informs the, the administration on what people are thinking. And so I think that, that's a very positive dynamic. Even if we ultimately don't end up on the same page, at least we know what people say.
And I think we, as a board, when I look at our performance, we are going to him for that information, or Mr. Placko, whoever, we need to get that from.
And then additionally, our superintendent is engaging with the public, so it offers another level of communication. So I think we meet that.
All right. C is provide the treasurer with clear statement of expectations of performance with he or she will be measured. Everybody, is this kind of the same conversation as it was with the superintendent?
I think so. And we've gone over that pretty extensively in meetings, right? And talked about how do we engage the treasurer and is there any other way we can engage the treasurer? And I think the board's done a good job of that. I think we meet that.
Would there be, anybody think differently than what we, how we rated the, I think it's the same conversation, so. All right. And then, again, D is the request of the information we need from the treasurer when we need it. Is it the same discussion we just had about the superintendent? Also, we're going to him when we need that information? Any different goals that we would set here?
For ourselves, I think we discussed that when we talked over the evaluations that we did this past year, and that we would do a better job ourselves of making sure that we did the evaluational of it, I think, the evaluation form, and so that we would be able to, in the coming year, provide more feedback on how they met the objectives.
So one, one issue that has been pretty, pretty chronic through, through my years on the board, has been, we do a good job of evaluation and set the, the goals, but it's interim follow-up, that sometimes, in fact, that every year has gotten, for the most part, just has not been a major focus. And, and, and so that, you know, from my perspective, still would need improvement. I think it'd be beneficial for everybody involved, for the superintendent and the treasurer, as well as for the board, to, you know, better understand what's going on and, and successes and roadblocks to, to successes and things like that, so that either roadblocks could be removed, or roadblocks could be taken into account, given what the goal is.
Any other thoughts on standard four? Any thoughts? Again, this is our first time going through this. Is there any thoughts on the evaluation process at all? Like, overall?
I think it was fairly, fairly simple and painless.
Any changes we would make?
Make it more exciting for the people in the audience.
The change I would make is to make sure it gets done at the same time we're doing the superintendent and the treasurer. So we're kind of on the same path. That would be the only thing I think we need to do. Any concerns with that? Set it up. All right. Well, I will type up notes and send it out to everybody. There is a place where we as a board should sign it, saying we agree with the notes when I send them out. And then, obviously, we can't have discussion and email about it, but if there's edits, you can tell me what edits there are, then I can make sure we try to incorporate those and other discussion will have a table. Okay?
Sounds good.
So one question?
Yeah.
You said you're gonna more align this, align this with the
The timing.
The timing. And, and so, how many times a year would that be?
Just the once a year, that we do our formal evaluation and objectives.
Yeah, because we had discussed, we would probably have more, more than one, at least more than one with our new superintendent.
Right. So we have 90 days is when we're gonna check back in with Mr. Rotino.
But we're not gonna do this in 90 days?
No, not the board.
We're not gonna do emails either. We're just gonna do a check-in.
I just want, I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, once a year, we'll go do this. Any, anything else?
No, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. We're not doing evaluations of our superintendent and treasurer. Like, we're just doing check-ins, formal check-ins of how we are, how we're working on the goals and whatever that we've set.
Right. Yeah. That's my understanding.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying a check-in, not an evaluation?
Correct, correct. Yeah. Anything else? All right, then we will go ahead and adjourn for right now. We don't have to formally, right?
We don't have to formally adjourn. We just get paused till seven.
All right, that gives us 10 minutes. So until seven, when the meeting starts.
It'd be important to bring us up to speed on dialogue.